Yeah. Meeting for the Cedar Springs City Council for Thursday, October 12th, 2023 to order at 7:04. Please rise with me and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation, of liberty and justice for all. And I would also just like to have a moment of silence and reflection for, to acknowledge the passing of a former city manager from the city of Cedar Springs, Chris Burns. She was our city manager three city managers ago, I think that's right. And I'm very sad to hear that she passed away very suddenly. So if we could just have a moment? Okay, thank you. And then we need to, do you want this as a motion? When you go to adopt the agenda?
Okay, so wait until step flag, I think.
I think so. I think that's my understanding. All right, so roll call. Ms. Atchison, here. Give chocolate. Mr. Gross, here. Ms. Hamel, present. Ms. Nixon, here. Ms. Powell, here. Ms. Race, here. And Mayor Conley is here. Should we do public comment first? Okay. So the council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, the council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and eventually to the council for actions. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes to each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name if you would like. We publish comments. Come on up.
My name is Ron Howell, 404 Eighth Street. And I understand that it's regarding the library, another proposal has been received from the city or from Solon Township. And you'll be looking at that and making a decision. Uh, I guess as a resident taxpayer, as I'm beginning to read about this and look at the numbers and everything else, I will say again that disparity, uh, the numbers are not fair as far as contributions. Um, most recently I read a comment from Claire, and I'm sorry, I forgot her last name, from the Michigan Library Group people. And she even referred to the fact that when they look at joint libraries, they look at the contributions to see if it's fair. And of course, that's a very, you can do a lot of things with word fair. But they look at per capita. So, and it's not there. So in this next proposal, I ask that you please look at that. Uh, because as I mentioned in the last meeting, myself and my wife were paying X amount of dollars per capita. And I'd like to see a proposal from them be the same. I'm not sure about the other parts of the agreement or whatever it may be, but I'm kind of focusing on the money side. If that doesn't happen, and if you make that decision, uh, that's fine. Um, then let's move with the city library because we've got a lot of things to address. Uh, there's kids out there who have started school. I am concerned about this whole artificial intelligence, AI, where's the role of a library librarian and all this? We need to talk about that and not be hung up on all these other things. So if you feel you have to move ahead with the city library, do it. So, oh, the streets look great. Got to make sure I put that in. So, and I will hold the city manager responsible for making the contractor do his job. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, wonderful street has made such a difference in our community. I'm really proud of the outcome and it didn't, it didn't hurt as bad as the bridge. And I wanted to say for the friends of the library, they made over a thousand dollars and they, uh, they quickly started to try to figure it out how much they made. But there was so much change that they just stopped after they reached a thousand dollars. So there's that. And I want to put together a, um, a presentation of what your library card will do for you. What it, what we have at our library. I think that there's, we haven't done enough on that to let people know how much that we really have, what you, we can do with our library cards. And so I want to put together a presentation of that so that you really realize you have eBooks, you have lots of eBooks. I just went back a couple of years ago in our annual report just to see what the numbers, how much money we spent in the different categories. And I went back to 2016, 17, even back then, our total materials like that we spent for the library for our, for our, our product was eighteen thousand six dollars and, um, our electronics was three thousand two hundred and twenty, which included eBooks and e-magazines. And of course, we have Libby and we had Overdrive. Uh, we've had, uh, so we have the audio visual, we spent two thousand and fifteen dollars um, in, uh, 2021. And then it was, um, back, it was a thousand three hundred and eighty-four back in 2016, 17. So just, just saying, we, we do have a great library. It's not just a little piddly thing back in the, you know, in the backwoods. And it's beautiful. And the staff love the customers, you know, I mean, it's like family. It's like our community. And so having that, and then I was, you know, just thinking, if we push, push ahead with Kent District Library, I think we're going to miss out on a little interim, if we can ever get the agreement, you know, ironed out, which I believe we will, to have a chance to just kind of, it's, and we also need to get our strategic plan, it's, it's run out. So we need to look and see what it is that we're short on. What do we need? How much would it cost? And, and see if we have enough money. I, I believe that we will. It'd be nice to see what we can do when we put our resources together because I can tell you this, we have that library because we put ourselves together. What we can do as a community and agreeing and putting aside differences or ideas, and sometimes it can, might even be the wrong data that we're reacting to. Maybe, I, I know there are people that that come in, they don't even know what their library card will do. You know, a lot of the Kent District Libraries, like I know, I think that Sand Lake has something like four or five, uh, computers. We have 12. And we have laptops and we have hot, hotspots. We don't have a thousand, but we don't need a thousand. You know, so, and they, they're out all the time. We had 10, we got them on a grant. Uh, and somebody lost one. I'm sorry for them because they, I don't know how much it costs if you lose one, but it's can be good. So anyway, thank you. Um, we're, we're community. I, I went to the friends. I haven't been to the friends in a year. I went back yesterday, yesterday evening and we missed you, Rosie. For like five of us. So it's growing. And if anybody wants to be a part of something really good. We had a little request from, uh, from the staff that anyway, that they needed another cabinet in that room where we have committee meetings all the time. Stuff is just out in the open. And it was going to cost two hundred and some dollars. And the friends said, we'll do it. So we're working together. It's, it's such a happy place. So if you need any help in the interim till we get a new director, I would be willing to help. Thank you.
All of you for all your time that you've spent working on the library contract. Um, I just want to, um, request that we put the past behind us because I hear so much about how much was not spent in the past and that. Um, the contract we have before us is a step moving forward. And I ask that you consider that and consider the community in your deliberations. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, the roads look great. Uh, I am surprised that there is no handicap parking out here for City Hall, but I guess that's the way it is. Alan won't be coming to anything here. So that's okay. Um, got a copy of Solon's, uh, library presentation. Um, and it looks like it's something that, uh, we can all agree with, I hope. Uh, it's time to put all this kerfluffle behind us and to move forward and to get our life, our community library back to what it has been in the past and what we want it to be moving forward. Uh, with the additional monies that Solon is willing, uh, to take out their general fund. Um, we should have enough money to hire a director that we can keep, which would be a wonderful thing. Also enough money, uh, with that to be able to, uh, have additional resources available to our community. So, uh, please, when you're considering this, um, I would really like to see you go ahead and move forward with us now. Thank you so much.
How you doing guys? Mark Laws, city resident. I'm up here to tell you to continue to not lean towards KDL. I'm a economics and statistics degreed person who's worked in operations for 30 years plus years and never researched and all my activity and all the actions I've done. Do you ever get a better result when you go to a bigger group making decisions? You always, 100% of the time, get a better decision and a better outcome when the individuals or the smaller groups end up making the decisions and doing the things. So don't go with KDL. There's, uh, several jurisdictions that are trying to get out from under KDL because they don't have any control. We've had a community library mainly because one family left a big pile of money for us. And if you don't know who that family is, think about the natural gas folks. They left us a huge pile of money with the dirt, with the caveat that it would be a community library, that it wouldn't be somebody else's library, that the community would be making the decisions and controlling it. So thank that wonderful family for having that, uh, uh, soft heart to leave the money for the community. So please don't go with KDL. Keep it local. Keep it Donna style. She's done a fantastic job, but that's because it's local. That's because it's a community. I just, I don't know how much more to tell you. And think about, here you go. Think about that little cartoon, Bugs Life, where you got the ants and the grasshoppers. You got five grasshoppers ruling that whole anthill until Flick comes around and he gets beat up pretty bad because he's starting to buck the trend of listening to the grasshoppers and doing all the work. But eventually the rest of the ants figure out that there's a whole lot more ants than there are those few grasshoppers at the top. I think a lot of people in the community are starting to feel that way. I don't think you want the ants coming after the grasshoppers. I've done that before. Madam Mayor. Letting you know, because your despicable behavior to people, officials from other communities that came in here disgusted me. Me, we should not treat our visitors like that. Anyway, the community will be like ants. Just a reminder. Thank you.
North Main Street. I want to give kudos to the city this time around with real construction. They were very much more business friendly than what we had last year. I want to thank you on that. Uh, even the community has mentioned to us that there is a difference in the way things were done. And so thank you to that for those that made it happen smoothly. Those that may have lost count, there's seventy-three days, five hours and a half till Christmas. Her face, she's like, I know where that's going. Well, that's on your agenda, but just to let people know how community oriented or how holiday oriented our downtown is. I'm compiling a list between October Halloween-ish stuff and all the way through till New Year's. Right now I'm at 26 holiday related events in just the downtown.
People love a party.
Yes, we do.
There's, uh, seven different Halloween related ones and community givebacks in October. And then there's like at least eight and that's now without getting through everybody's in November, counting the Black Fridays and Thanksgiving type stuff. But December, there's a lot of them between the different Christmas ones. And we'd like to reach out and, uh, invite the council and staff to participate in the Christmas parade this year. I know, um, Mayor Conley, she's usually in the parade. I think a couple of the ones have been in there for times, but make a flow. Want to ski and you can pull it behind the cruiser with the sheriff's department.
Refresh me when there's the Christmas parade.
There during December.
To be continued.
But anyway, I just wanted to throw some positivity out there. We've got, I haven't got the list completed. It's just what I started working on with today. I'm over at 26, just holiday related, not counting non-holiday related, uh, bands and stuff at the brewery and different things. And so a lot of positivity, just the downtown. That's not counting what's going on at the wine bar and flows and highway commercials and so on.
Give me the specifics if you want. Give me the specifics on time and if you want tree lighting. Okay, four? Okay. On Zoom, if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself and the mayor will call upon you. Okay, anyone else? Moving on then. Public hearings, so adoption of the agenda. So this is where we need to make, do you need a motion? I guess I'm still not quite clear on this. To, we need a motion to add this to the agenda? Okay. We haven't officially voted to adopt the agenda.
Add those things and then you could make a motion to adopt the agenda as amended with those items.
Okay, so, um, the request is that we have two additions. A seven A motion to go into executive session to discuss attorney information, seven A move to seven B for the Halloween Spooktacular event. If you want to make it, if you want to flip them, I'm fine with that.
I'm just, I, I didn't know if there was some reason that we wanted to do the motion to go into closed session first or otherwise I just hate to make people who are hanging out to do general good to just.
Have to hang out and wait for us to have a conversation.
Yeah.
So we could make seven A, the Halloween Spooktacular event will keep at that. And then we'll make seven B, a motion to go into executive session to discuss attorney. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of seven B, a motion to go into executive session to discuss attorney-client privileged information.
I'll support. Any discussion? I'll do a roll call.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Race.
Yeah.
And Mr. Gross.
Yeah.
We have an agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda. Council members may request that any or all items be removed from the consent agenda. A motion is then in order to adopt all items not removed from the consent agenda. Requesting the removal of an item from the consent agenda is a prerogative afforded each council member and does not require the support of other council members.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda as written.
Cause she's our, she's our, there might be something we need to discuss. Any other discussion? I'll do a roll call because there's some money involved. So Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yeah.
Ms. Race.
Yes.
And Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Okay, we have a consent agenda. Action item A. Motion to approve the Halloween Spooktacular community event for October 31st, 2023 and have the KC SD deputies on Main Street to assist with the traffic crossing from 5:30 to 7:30 at an estimated cost of $665. Second meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Um, are we crossing the street or closing the street?
Closing it for that, for the, the two hours.
Is there any other information?
Well, sure, sure. But I mean, like, it's not like a red flannel where we close it the whole day. We're closing it for a couple hours, plus or minus, obviously. So.
Can we hear from Carrie again, what exactly what's going to happen? Not that it's going to.
Cause it's different. Cause it's different. Yeah.
Yeah. We're here for it.
So basically we're closing it down from church to Maple Street, kind of like what it was for the road closure. Uh, we decided to have the trunk or treat lineup coming from, we debated whether it come from the American Legion or come from the staging area by the White Plains Trail, but since they have bingo at the American Legion on Tuesdays, we decided to come from Maple Street via by the staging area.
So people can bring cars to do a trunk or, I don't mean to.
The road, what do we, where are we parking?
Main Street, kind of like a car show, except for instead of you coming to look at the cars, you come and get candy from the cars.
Park parallel, you're going to park more diagonal?
That way, when, when they get ready to make the smoothest way to reopen the road is instead of having everybody hee-haw around with them, they back into somebody to just turn and go.
So, let me just make sure that I got it, that I can get in your vision. So officially, the trunk or treat starts at 5:30. But it sounds like anyone who's going to do trunk or treat may need to be there a little earlier. So like what time?
We had that at.
And like we probably, for earlier, are we talking like five? We probably need, yeah? Okay.
So like, on them 4:30 to be there for lineup. If they're not there by quarter after, they're not getting in. Because we want to have it so there's no cars moving by time to.
Up to do that, right?
Actually filled out the form, but we've got six of them that say that they're going to, they just haven't yet. So we're the spring's Halloween, uh, Spooktacular Facebook event. And it's on the serious brings area Chamber of Commerce, uh, website.
And, um, do we have it in the city?
Not yet.
We'll make that happen?
Yesterday, right? For the trunk. Yesterday that it got posted up.
To get it, right?
Things that had to be hashed out like, yep. So it's out there.
We just want to be able to put it out there where they can find it.
Is it, then are the businesses going to be open also? So that's all together.
Treating.
And then.
All the sugar. The people that are doing the trunk or treat can decorate their car and do whatever.
Is there a theme or no? Is there overarching theme or no?
Um, Ghostbusters would probably be great because the Kent Theater is doing Ghostbusters 2.
Nice.
I think there'll, there'll be five weekends of free movies at the Kent Theater. And that'll be, that'll be one of them.
The weekend around before, after Halloween?
Halloween's on a Tuesday. So that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday would be a Ghostbusters. Uh, so he's got some people that are becoming dressed up as Ghostbusters as well as Cindy Koffra from the 4H and I can't remember the foundation she's got. It's got a couple of words to it, but they're going to have some inflatable stuff involved with Ghostbusters and other people in costumes. So Ghostbusters might just as well be a good theme people could pick up.
Same as street. We, we talked about this before, but lots of kids get hit by cars on Halloween. And so this is a really great way to like, make sure that doesn't happen.
So we'd have crossguards at intersections. We all know that people don't wait for the intersection to cross and it's a busy time of day.
Excited to hear that. So if you want to do trunk or treat, there's a form. It can be found at the Facebook page for.
Could also be on the Chamber's website. Cedar Springs Halloween Spooktacular.
Springs Halloween Spooktacular as an event.
You should be able to find that on.
The Chamber of Commerce page. And then it will be available on the city website.
We'll get it to her and then she can.
Perfect. Lovely and amazing. And if we had a couple printed copies for our friends who avoid Facebook and all of its pitfalls, that would be lovely. Thank you.
Seven B, a motion to go into executive session to discuss attorney-client privilege information.
Rebecca's asking the question.
Yeah.
In a second, but I don't have a vote.
Oh.
Could we have? Yeah, um, I was, uh, sitting in front of Red Flannel Office and a pickup pulled up and said, hey, you guys want some candy? And I said, sure. And he's had a pickup truck full of candy. It to us. And, um, we have it here at the city. There's boxes and boxes and boxes of it. So.
I mean, I buy candy to hand out for city hall.
This here that really needed, uh, for some free candy, come on into City Hall and get a box full. Okay. Yeah, we couldn't give, hand out that much candy if it would take a week. Literally.
Thanks. I'm not going to tell you.
Candy. Let's get it gone. Let's get it gone. Okay, get it. They're like boxes.
Candy for the library, actually.
Yes. 1990s.
I'll just do an all, well, I guess it's actually under the amount that could be done by, we'll just do an all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We don't really need a roll call for something the manager in theory could have done without even our vote.
It's under the amount of money. But I love that we're talking about it because it's a big deal.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session to discuss attorney, attorney-client privileged information.
There, second. I'll do a roll call. Ms. Atchison.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Ms. Hamel.
Yes.
Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yep.
Ms. Race.
Yeah.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. We will adjourn for three minutes to go into closed session?
Sure.
Yes. So people can like get up and move? Yes. So people can like, get up and move?
Are back from closed session, we need to vote to come back into closed session.
Or open.
Or open session, we need to vote.
Make the motion that we go back into open session.
I would second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Do we need a roll call?
You can voice vote.
Okay.
Okay. That's what it's about.
All opposed then?
All opposed. We're in open session because somebody might just say, I don't want to go into open session. So we're going to vote that down. All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
I forgot to talk about memo.
It's okay, you need a second.
I make the motion to approve library service agreement with Sullen Township and authorize mayor and clerk to execute the same. Okay.
Hi, for clarification, this is the one that our attorney will be sending back to them, correct?
This is the third amended one.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Very good. So.
Okay. I just wanted to be very clear.
Just to make that in case that isn't clear to people who are watching.
It may not necessarily be one that we received.
We are authorizing the mayor under this and the clerk to execute a authorized, a third amended.
Agreement.
Agreement per attorney's opinions and recommendations and wonderful wording and brilliance and all the other good things that attorneys do.
Okay, any other discussion?
I will do a roll call. Let me get my. Somewhere under here, I have. We'll just do it this way, Ms. Powell.
Yeah.
Ms. Atchison.
Yeah.
Mayor Conley votes yes, Ms. Nixon.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm still trying to find my. Ms. Hamel.
Yeah.
Ms. Ray.
Yeah.
Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Motion carries. You have your marching orders. We thank you. Thank you. Moving on to. Item.
We're now in discussion.
Yeah, well, we had, no, we had discussion, we just voted. So we're now on to, yeah, discussion items, right?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes. No. So, this is one.
This feels confusing to me.
So, under discussion items, A, 8A is the library agreement services, just noting that Sullen Township accepted.
Yeah, we already did.
The extension, we did.
Yeah.
Did I miss it? How is I not here?
No.
Right.
Yeah. But we don't really have anything more to discuss, do we? I don't know.
No, it didn't. Very good.
We have some, is this a good time to talk about any of the? No?
No.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're moving on to item B, Cedars, New Cedars, New Year's, Bringing Eve. Whoo, we need to work on some wording. A community event on December 31st, 2023, January 1st, 2024, from 9:00 to 12:30 in the morning, second review.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
It flows really good, but you're just, yes.
Now we can, now we can steal. Now we can, now we can steal.
No, we're Cedar Springs.
Right.
But we're springing.
Into the new year.
That's the bottom line.
Okay, so, tell us about it.
Tell us about it.
Been kind of working out, we've got, right now, we've got at least two businesses that are willing to do community givebacks, work towards funding it as well as getting some other sponsors. Uh, we're gonna keep it kind of low scale for the first year, but we're just basically blocking off from there, Cherry Street to Maple Street, and having a ball drop at the corner of Elm and Main. Most of the businesses have agreed to be open, and we're looking at either having a DJ versus bands to keep the cost down, but we're also checking with a couple of local radio stations to see if they'll come do a live broadcast. Part of the illumination and stuff, we're looking at doing an illuminated, uh, dance contest, where people get to come be part of the entertainment, and they can use the battery-operated play. Kind of are not gonna encourage the fire play, just because. I sneezed, it might be on somebody's building, ooh, it's hot.
Yeah. Marty would have some feelings.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not gonna try to bring that to Marty.
No.
Battery-operated ones now on, uh, hula hoops or batons, whatever, something illuminated, you know? Because it's gonna be fairly dark, so lighting and stuff is gonna be great.
One of the, from DDA, I, one of the, um, what's his name, Casey, from the, one of the marijuana from, is it Michigan? Was talking about a drone.
No, that was Cody from Cedar Springs Cannabis. We, first bid we got on that was twenty grand.
Twenty grand?
One drone?
Oh, that's for hundreds of drones.
Got your drone, but the drone flights and static, bloating fireworks?
That is neat, but I feel like twenty thousand dollars the first year of event.
That's where we like, well.
He thought it could be done for more like five, and he was like, if each of the marijuana places put in like a grand or two.
Started asking.
Was like at the conversation in August or whenever that was.
In the perfect world where we had all the money and we knew that we was gonna have thousands of people for sure showing up, it'd be nice to have a tent with a beer or a band in it down in front of Redbird and one at the other end, and we'd have kind of a one-band gold and the other band gold, but for the first year, we're gonna like, well, we'll see how things go before we spend money we haven't made yet.
Sorry that I didn't remember your name, I've got a few things in my brain, so when you watch this, I do know who you are.
Had to think about it. I'm glad it's not just me.
Noticed, thank you. Well, you know, I was.
I really feel seen.
Mayor Hall called me Mrs. Hopkins for a while.
True. He used to call you Mrs.
He called you Mrs. Hopkins too.
Well, and Mrs. Perry, if I recall, Mrs. Perry, yes. So.
Biggest hiccup right now is, uh, I've been talking with some of the other places that have done and that currently do ball drops, because the closing of roads down after dark is different than closing them down before dark. What, uh, like Luddington, what they do is they use their DPW trucks and snowplow trucks to block off and reroute US ten. They use the phase two or stage two barricades.
Sarge's face.
Been doing that for fourteen years, and that's how they. No.
I'm looking at Sarge's face. That is true, yeah.
There's other trucks around, there's cement trucks or whatever, something big, not just, anything, put a pinto out there.
Have to be in the road, we have so many, you know, spots that we wouldn't have to block the road, or isn't that an option?
There's always an option, but if you're, it depends on whether you're putting on an event just to put on an event, or whether you're putting on an event to support your businesses.
Redbird and, and the brewery with, like it, in front of them.
Yeah.
That's part of the reason why they were like, geeked to be open is because it's right in front of their door. The American Legion had found out because we was checking with a DJ, and well, we're gonna be playing at the American Legion that night, so I can't. So we checked with the American Legion, their event there is open to the public that night. So that works great too.
They could be part of the, like, average, because I had no idea the American Legion even did a thing. Yeah. I mean, sure, I'm just saying, I had no idea.
Had bands, but it sounds like they're doing a DJ this year.
For any special event to really be known that it exists in the public sphere, so, yeah.
That they expected five hundred their first year and they had five thousand-ish.
Well, go with God, sir. Alright.
May the force, may the force be with you.
I mean.
May the force be with you.
Making it as safe as we can, because nobody wants to use their liability insurance just because you have it.
If we could just skip that step.
They're only gonna.
Bring the updates next month and.
Yeah. Can we just try, thank you for bringing it to us and come back when you were on council, our whole process of trying to hear things twice, and especially when it's a new event, because we do put it on YouTube and we do, this is a way to get it out there, that we're, this is a thing and. Thanks. May the force be with you. Moving.
Don't cross the streams.
Moving, don't cross the streams. Moving, moving on to, I'm feeling all kerfuffled because I don't have my agenda, I guess I could do it on the screen.
So we're on social district options.
Yeah.
Eight C.
C, social district options, and I'm assuming this is specifically about New Year's?
No.
No, so this is just in general expanding? Okay.
I gave you the four-year history.
Right.
We started out kind of small, limited hours, expanded a little, expanded a little bit more. Current resolution expires December thirty first, twenty-three, we want to bring a new one to you next month, but there's a couple of things that I need your, your thoughts on, hours of operation, district and common area boundaries, keeping it the same, and do you want to exclude any dates? So hours, we're thinking noon to either ten PM or midnight? What, what do you think?
I'm fine with midnight, but.
I'm sure it's noon to ten PM.
I'm not a social district person.
It's closed by midnight, or by ten o'clock around here, right?
I think the brewery does.
They were at nine o'clock forever, and I don't, they might have extended to ten.
Well, I, maybe we need some information on when the hours of operation for these businesses are, because, I mean.
There's no reason to be open to, or till midnight, if nothing's, if they're not, because that's, they're the ones.
Point, this is not just walk around downtown with, with alcohol, it's, it's supposed to be to help. Yeah.
And bring back in the resolution noon to ten PM, okay?
I mean.
Oh, because if, if I get a drink at the Redbird and I'm walking downtown,
and it's, they closed at ten, but I just got it at nine fifty or whatever, I think that's a little bit of grace.
Yeah, if you want to walk home.
Yeah.
I mean, I walk up to me straight to.
Sheriff has better things to do than what about me with my little cup, but still.
Well, and I'm also thinking like, when we, when we do Wednesday night concerts, don't some of those go past that?
Nine.
Okay. Because I feel like.
Brown much beyond that, you know, I don't, I just think that we just follow what the.
Right, but if you've got your drink and the band finishes at nine, but you're still, your kids are playing in the park and, I mean, I think ten or maybe even ten thirty.
Okay.
Doesn't get dark until, that was kind of my thought, is like when it gets dark, because I don't, you know, if it's an idea. But I don't, I don't know if we can make it when it gets dark, like it, that moves. Saying I really, I mean, midnight's pushing it, I feel like.
Oh, yeah.
But I think, I think ten or ten thirty is.
District right now is, um, the Pocket Park across from the Redbird, seventeen North Main, where we're gonna put the.
Yeah.
Spring, um, both sides of Main Street down to Maple, and then all of the amphitheater area, that's the district. Are we good with that? Okay. And do you want to exclude any dates? And I have a comment on that. At the last DDA board meeting, the owner of the brewery said it is difficult for him, especially the week of red flannel, because people are in his establishment and they want to buy a drink and, and leave, and that whole week, he can't let them because there's no social district allowed that week.
Oh. Because of the beer tents, or?
Because that was part of the resolution, we excluded that week.
Didn't want people walking up and down the street drinking, but, um, yeah, I know, it's in the application, but not actually in the resolution. Yeah, I was looking at it today, in the, in the application. It was very difficult.
And that seems kind of like an unreasonable burden. And I really.
Exclude any dates then?
Kind of what I'm.
When, so thinking about red flannel week, right, because red flannel does the beer tent, it's a bigger fundraiser for them. People are not allowed to leave the beer tent with a beer.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
So, I, I don't know.
How can we exclude just red flannel? Not the whole week?
When do you have the beer tents?
That's the special cups and the whole, like, the beer tent doesn't fall under the scope of the state laws of the social district?
Liquor license for that event.
Don't you want people going there? Like, not anybody can just have any alcohol, like, it has to be in this specific cup, in this specific.
Don't believe that we need people walking up and down the streets on red flannel day during the day and the hours that we dictate for them to be doing it. There's enough people on the sidewalks and so forth and jostled around, it's gonna get spilled on people that may not want it. So, I just, I don't have a problem with excluding.
Just that day, that day.
Today.
In October? Because we can't.
Yes, yes, yes.
Change the hours. Well, that's even worse. That's so much more confusing. We, I feel like we either need to one or the other, we can't.
Uniform setting, we want to have permanent signs made and put throughout the district. That's what the DDA has been requesting for years, but if it changes every year, we can't get permanent signs made. I think we're at the point where maybe we can get some permanent signs made.
I would, I would say we could exclude the first Saturday in October every year.
That's his most difficult time, he says they're just about frantic, trying to keep people from walking out with their drinks. I know.
Okay, but also though, if you have the, if you have the beer tent though, and then you have people that can go into a brewery that is gonna have more beer than the beer tent, then, and come out, then that's gonna screw over the beer tent.
Problem was the week, the days before red flannel.
The day of, though.
Well, the whole week, yeah.
And until, I don't, I'm not a beer tent person, but what time does the beer, seven, and he's not, like, I mean, if he's done it, ten. I mean, the overlap, I mean, the beer tent goes until two?
Oh, midnight.
Thinking you're gonna stay at the brewery. If you're going to the beer tent, you're going to the beer tent, I, I don't know.
So, when, when the brewery is having this difficulty with people wanting to leave on red flannel, are they citing the social district, or are they just being ridiculous?
Because they're in the social district and they want to go out and watch the parade or stuff like that.
And you get a, you get a, whatever their special beer is, I don't drink beer, but whatever their thing is, and you want to go watch the parade while you finish.
You can only leave with one, right? It's not like you can leave with a keg. So, I feel like.
I feel like, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we just shouldn't exclude red flannel.
I agree.
Maybe it's, it's, it's us causing the problem. You know, if people were just saying, oh, I just want to leave my beer because I should leave with my beer, well, that's different. That's you being a jerk, but if it's us causing the problem.
Because every other day.
Because every other day you can do this.
The issue.
Like, I'm pretty sure he's like packed, so there's that whole, like, you get your food.
Not even room for them to stay and enjoy it. I think maybe.
Parade is the main thing, and then they have to like enforce it and put signs around the door, and he says it's been very difficult.
Yeah, this feels like us causing the problem. And, and the, the brewery is very good about not over-serving. I don't think I recall of, an incident for them yet.
Not like you can't get a special cup if you want to. Right, right. But it's up to us to, to support his business and his customers and.
The problem. So maybe we should.
The thing is that you're coming to have lunch at our brewery, that's this really fabulous food. I mean, I have people talk about our Brussels products all the time. And then, you want to go watch the parade or.
With a cup.
Air or, you know, whatever, while you finish your beverage, I mean, I guess.
It's just the difficulty he brought up. I, I remember discussing it, but, um, I looked through the resol- solution, I looked through the ordinance, and it wasn't there, but it's on the application. So that's where the stickler is, and he says they almost have to come to blows with people to say you can't go out, so it's, uh.
Burned it, I'm allowed to do this, and I can see it, I can see it.
Well.
In terms of red flannel, though?
Well.
And the people who go to the beer tent, I mean, again, I'm not really a beer tent person, but it's a different problem. It's a different, well, and it's a whole different, like, the Friday night is the class reunion thing. Like, people are going there to like be with the whole group of people that are there, is my understanding. And so, where this is more about like, you have your drink you want to finish.
Right.
From your meal.
You're not drinking to get drunk, you have a drink, and I, and I can, first of all, I can choke on some chocolate. Um, but I can appreciate Jerry's point that similarly, I do not love people walking around downtown on red flannel with an alcoholic beverage. But, it is, it is one, I'm so sorry, excuse me.
The idea is that red flannel day, anybody that was downtown this year, which probably most everybody was, to see the numbers, people are on the sidewalk that are not participating, all it takes is one to go out there, get bumped, get spilled on somebody, then all of a sudden, there's a unfavorable light on the community, because you've got these people drinking on the street and got spilled on somebody. Uh, it's, it's, it's easy to say, this being the Keystone Pop in the past, which most of the people enjoyed the Keystone Pop, but it being one of them, you had to read the people to figure out which one you could approach or not. They knew you were there, but they didn't want to be messed with by you, so, and it's the same thing here. It's not, it's not something that. I doubt if he would lose a whole lot of business by that one beer that's gonna go out on the street.
Regulate, him having to regulate it. It's not, it's not bad.
To take their drink out.
I, I can appreciate your point, is I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say, but I can also appreciate the need for uniformity, um, so that we can say, these are the rules and these are the rules every day of the year.
You have a top?
Top on, yeah. Can we require a top on that day?
I mean, I mean. Well, no, but if we're talking about. Like, I, I mean, I remember from the, seeing them at the concerts, that they had, like, people had them with tops. Like, that was the thing, like, they had tops.
And they had a drinking area.
And around, but anyway, that's his dilemma, and he brought it up and asked us to look at that, that, because it's, it's red flannel day, it's not like it's a national holiday, like, I think Christmas, can you sell, can you sell alcohol on Christmas now? You didn't used to be able to.
On Sunday or something?
Yeah, it used to be no Sunday sales of liquor, but I guess beer was different, if I remember correctly.
Drinker, so I don't know.
I think that you can get spilled on no matter what you're drinking. I think that you can get spilled on no matter what you're drinking. I'm not going to be happy with someone spilling a caramel latte on me. It's sticky. Beer's nasty.
Yeah, I was gonna say. My, my kid with an elephant ear was like, or scrambled eggs and pancakes as the, uh, the clerk knows.
Go with it however it is. So.
Discussion tonight anyway, so we can marinate and, and think about it and, and, but I can, I can appreciate the, the want and the need for uniformity, but I can certainly appreciate that there are those of us who don't love it in general. In general, and especially on red flannel day, which is, even though it's not a national holiday, it should be because.
Of course.
Any other discussion on it? Did we give you enough? Like we'll talk about it again?
It'll be. Sure. Cause you, you simply couldn't make that line.
And, and honestly, it feels like it would, I mean, like I would be okay with that. Like, I don't know. We can expand the social district for one day.
Five, really? Because that's where people walk to avoid the big crowd.
All the time. And Rockford is busy on the weekends, no matter what. And they're walking around and they don't have any problems. I mean, I don't follow people. But I've seen it. I've seen them walking around and just, it's just normal these days. So.
Well, I mean, if they're not doing it in a cup, then they're already like.
They're already not in compliance.
Right. I mean, that's part of the social districts. It has to be a neck, like a cup.
I don't know. Okay. Anywho.
Community event calendar. Calendar, teams of Skinner Field. We're all good with that.
Yeah, they're doing awesome. Yep.
Uh, nor, the zoning map that we have in front of us. That's very pretty. The new zoning map. The North Kent Community Enrichment Fall Programs. Mingle with Chris Kringle Event, December 2nd from four thirty to seven. So what time is the tree lighting? At the heart. And Cedar Springs Christmas Carriage Rides Community Event, December 7th, 14th, 21st from four to nine. We're good with that. I have a, um, piece of communication to share from Kami Howell, the former library director who sent me a very lovely message and then suggested that I pass it on to everyone that she really appreciates. Um, how hard we have worked to get additional funding for the library and to support the library. And she just wants us to know that that was a thing. So I said I would pass that along. Anybody else have any other communications? Department report, city manager.
Um, I thought red flannel went very well. I, um, popped into city hall a couple of times. I spent my day at the Rotary Chicken BBQ Tent. We did sell out. Woo hoo, 500 meals.
That was delicious chicken, by the way.
Um, we did the final walkthrough today of phase one of the Main Street Project. Um, just very few little minor, like, you know, around the stop signs isn't filled in with epoxy yet. And, but I mean sidewalks are fine. The street is fine. Um, phase two is going very well. Um, the curbs at Pine and Main are all redone. They were supposed to pour the sidewalk portion of that today. Um, the plan next week, Tuesday, they'll be milling up the road. Wednesday, raising the castings of all those pipes on, on that section and then putting down the new pavement on Thursday. So quick and they'll be out of here. Um, our road will be open. Next week, Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be in Traverse City at the MML convention with Rose Powell. And, um, just wanted to share North Kent Community Enrichment did not receive a Sparks grant. They applied earlier this year to install some pickleball courts. They were not awarded the grant, so maybe we'll try again next year. Thank you.
We talked about trying to put together a patronicity grant. Once upon a time.
A federal grant though, that's sort of like a.
It's like a.
GoFundMe-ish.
Yes, but there's like some monies out there, like if you apply for them that do matching. And then the GoFundMe piece is the patron part, but there's, and I don't, I can't remember if they were through MML. I can't. I, I probably have a paper or something.
Just, I don't have any thing in the works. So.
Question that that might, if, if the pickle, I know pickleballs were an important thing. We had some people who were coming and talking to us a lot about trying to make pickleball happen.
I think we talked about patronicity with the dog park and the pickleball. Um, just as options, but then it kind of fell off the plate and I, we never recircled back.
Right.
Because we did other things.
Spark grant and it's a thing. Like we could maybe explore that if it's important to try to move pickleball forward. Cause I know people have some strong feelings about pickleball. I'm here for it. And I've never played pickleball. I know that's probably like heresy, but if it's important, we can try to see how to make it happen. Uh, anything else? All right. Department of Public Works. Do we have Tanya?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, no, I don't have nothing. Darla pretty much covered it.
It, it, this, the town is looking really good. You all are doing a fabulous job and you did a wonderful job with managing for red flannel.
Thanks. And I'll, I'll let the rest of the department know.
Yeah, please do. Cause that was like a ridiculous amount of, of trash to be picked up and all of the things. And at least I did not have to come ask Bill to fish anyone's cell phone out of a storm drain. That was last year. So that didn't happen this year. We'll count that as a win. Although we did have some missing keys.
Oh, yeah.
I remember that.
And the second one?
In Wesco. Or something.
That was located. So, and thank you to the county sheriffs who were super amazing with that as well, with the combination of making all of that happen with DPW. Police, moving right into you.
Yeah, glad the final is over. I think things went really well.
I agree. And even with the crazy rain and the, I'm, it was, you know, rain and then no rain and then rain. And then it was, I think it went really well. So, yeah, no, that was, and I, I had several people come and tell me about how responsive you all were when they lost Yoda diaper bag. There was the key missing and when there was another key missing and you all did a really wonderful job of that piece of that, which we don't often think of. I think a lot of people with policing think about you just going after the bad guys. And this idea of just making all of the stuff work is a huge piece of your job that you do really well, that I feel like we need to acknowledge. So thank you for that. And I know you had to miss your daughter's homecoming to. So thank you for being here for that. Cause I was also missing that homecoming. So. Wonderful. Fire department.
I don't have anything in the interest of time. My ice cream is getting soft, so I will keep it brief.
You should make Greg come talk.
Pardon me?
Greg, come talk. You should be like, you're the full-time person. You get paid to be here.
Thirty put in his ad hours for today.
Yes, I bet he has. That's fair. Everything good with red flannel? And do you need candy for Halloween?
No, um, we have a $500 gift card from Myers. We're going to, uh, go out and buy four bags of candy with that. And we had seven calls red final day. Um, I don't want to get into the mud puddle too deep, but I'm uh, thinking along the same lines as Mr. Gross. Um, you get 40,000 people in here and they all have a, a, a tenth of them have alcohol. And we're gonna have to think about more than one full-time firefighter. We might have to have about 10. I don't have anything against a, a person having a cocktail or two, not at all, but uh, that's my, uh, uh, my, uh, thought on that is, uh, that's quite a crowd to shove into eight city blocks. So. Having said that, I will, uh, try to be quiet.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that, Marty. And thank you for all that you, I mean, that's a lot of calls. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. And I will pass that on.
You always, always show up. You always show up fast. And I have people in communities that, that is not the case. So thank you for that. City clerk.
I have a couple of dates to mention. Um, October 16th, 4pm is our election commission meeting for our November election. We also have public accuracy testing on October, the 23rd. That is at 4pm as well. Public is welcome to both of those meetings. Um, and then election day, November 7th, 7am to 8pm. Um, and I know last time I did make an ask of the council if there are individuals interested, excuse me, um, in working some of the nine days of early voting. I did put out some information out there on social media, on requirements and um, how to apply and whatnot. Um, so to put in per, in perspective, we would have had three days of minimum of voting in 2024. We will now have a minimum of 30 days of voting in 2024. We need to staff 30 days worth of time. Throw that out there again.
Just to throw that out there. Do you?
Each of those days. So.
Just to do something?
If you have individuals interested in working the election for early voting, that's what I would ask of you. Can you email us like a list of requirements and how they can apply? So that I can like post it and stuff. You guys again.
Yeah, there's still quite a bit of email in there. Um, and just to be clear, like any one of our immediate family members could if we aren't on the ballot.
You're not on the ballot.
Is that a paid position? Do they have to fill out a job app or?
And you do have to fill out the election inspector application form and you do have to, to declare a political party.
A training for that 10-day deal?
Uh, usually it's about a two, two and a half hour training required. Um, you must attend that training before you can become an inspector. Full interested. Um, and we could potentially have free workers work all of those 90 days, but or, you know, it just probably won't work out for those individuals to work all, every single early vote day in 24. They can be younger. My preference would be 18 because during school hours.
And do they have to live?
They, they just have to be a registered voter. They could be in any jurisdiction.
Any of my former students who are. Okay.
Just be a lot of juggling to figure out how it's going to work and you guys to be aware that it's no longer three days. It's 30 days.
Okay. I will. I will see what I can, what bushes I can shake. Finance director. Emily, we're so happy you're here.
Um, I'm one month in now and I'm enjoying it. Things have been great. I've been trying to take advantage of training opportunities as they come up. I've done a few webinars so far and got another one coming up next week that I'm going to be um, sitting on. So, um, just trying to learn as much as I can. Um, hopefully get some of the annual reporting done once the audit is complete, which should be, um, shortly. So hopefully we'll be able to get that taken care of before we start prepping for winter taxes. Cause those will go out at the end of November and start collecting December 1st. All I have.
And code enforcement. She is such a hard job.
16 years in mental health.
Yes, right. That's who you want for your code enforcement officer is a person who has 16 years in mental health. Anything for us from code enforcement that building inspection, boards and commission minutes, teams of Skinner Field. I'm so glad that's going well. The library board. North Kent Community Enrichment. Council comments.
Um, I just had a wonderful red flannel day despite the rain and to see all the friends and, um, just the smiles and the joy of that day. It's just hard to describe that this little city just blossoms for the day. It's, it's incredible. And, um, uh, I, I'm glad to see everybody here and thank you for coming to the meeting and our new, uh, man on our, um, election for November is here tonight too. And what's your first name? Braden Marvel is on the, the, the ballot. So I'm glad to see you and it's, I hope you're ready for continuing your political future with Cedar Springs. Cause we always need more folks standing in line and re, ready to work. So thank you for that.
Mr. Gross?
Let's see, uh, I sincerely hope that the new revision of the library agreement does become agreeable with the Solent Township also. Uh, I would like to get this one off our plates. And continue on as many, many people want it to happen. So uh, although it's not exactly the same thing that they presented to us. I don't see it being that much different than it was before. Few, few different changes, but, uh, I hope this takes care of it because, uh, let's put this one to rest. That's it.
Ms. Atchison?
There are a couple of things about red flannel. Um, I said it's, it was very hard for me to sit and watch the parade. Because the, the children and even parents with their children were pushed all the way almost out to the center line. The band hardly could walk through. People were asking them to move back. The Keystone cops would come and get them to move back. And the minute they were gone, they were back out there again. My heart was so worried that somebody was going to get hit. This little two-year-old kept running out there. His parents, they do not understand that these are vehicles driving. And they might be able to see them when they're coming up frontwards, but they're not seeing them on the side. They're not seeing them from the rear. And I just walked down and I said, can you guys please, please move back? Of course, you know, I got a lot of flapp from that, but I don't know what we can do. If we can put barricade, you know, can we put, you know, they're going to walk under. I don't know what we can do. I just kept saying, pretty soon we're not going to be able to have candy. I mean, it's just not a lot. And then I had, um, somebody come in and ask about, um, for the apartments or wherever where they don't have designated driveways that, that somebody, um, in the years past have brought them like traffic cones to kind of mark, um, a parking spot for them. So not everybody's parking in their parking spots. Um, I think it was the code enforcer maybe that had done that before. So, you know, if we can check on that, that they brought that, you know, ask about that. Cause these guys said they had to walk four blocks to bring their groceries in the house. But it, just a couple of things that I noticed and people have, um, talked about that day. Um, other than that, we had no problems in our restrooms. Everything was good.
It was much love for our restrooms.
Everybody likes the fact that we had them. Everybody likes the fact that we had them and that was nice to be there. Um, on the library, um, I don't really know what to say anymore. I just don't really know what to say anymore. Um, it continues to be about funding for the library. It continues to be about fairness to the community, having a nice library, having enough funds to help us keep it in the community. And we did hear tonight, don't do KDL. It's not even about KDL. Okay, that was something that was checked into for funding, in case we needed it, because we did not have enough funding. So trying to get the funding brought about everything and all this big complications and it's like there's just no way this should have come to this. If Solon wants to be in the community library with Cedar, we have to be able to figure this out and let them let our people on the boards figure out what's going on. I mean, ridiculous. It's not, it's a, it's, it's like I am I, I understood, I understood what people were saying and I understood, but we have been on this board, working on this for a long time.
A year, yeah.
I am so over it. I am so over it. I want the library to stay. I've visited the library quite a few times. I went in and the ladies were wonderful. It was a great place, beautiful library. If we want the library to stay in the community, you have to, they have to be able to fund the library, okay? If, if we can't fund the library and come to an agreement, we're gonna have to find another way. Okay, it's like come to the table, please. Come to the table. I feel like we're stepping backwards. We take a step forward, we take a step forward, we're, we're, we're like, you know, letting more things in, like, you know, um, agreeing to more things and then they're backtracking and it's, it's, I, I, I'm just sick of it. I'm sorry, but I, I, my, you know, I, I, this is what it took for me to be done. Um, we do not want Solon Township's residents to not have a library. We do not want that. We do not want to have somebody take over. We do not want to not have a library. But if we have to do a Cedar Springs library on its own, we will find a way. That's not what I want. But if we have to, we'll find a way. That's it.
Ms. Ms. Ray.
Um, just Red Flannel was good. I was here for a little bit with Lisa and Pam and I had some chicken, it was really good. Unfortunately missed the parade, because I had this, another, um, thing I had to do, so. Uh, but I heard it was busy. I mean, I've been here for many of them for many years and I know how great it is for the community. Um, just, uh, wanna say thank you to everyone who's been here helping us through this, Blake. Um, and that's all I got. Have a good night.
Ms. Hamel?
Um. I think, uh, just in terms of the library, the main point that I would like to stress is that I work for the city residents. I was elected by the city residents. And as much as I want a community library, I can't vote against the people who elected me's best interests. So, I am crossing my fingers that we can get to, um, on agreement. Uh, but I don't feel like it's on us at this point, like we've, um, acquiesced to a lot. Like the millage is still not equal. And that was pretty much the whole reason why we were doing this and it's still not gonna be equal at the end. Um, so, yeah, I hope that, I hope that Solon can, can pull through, um, for their residents, because I can't pull through for their residents, because I have to represent my own.
Okay, Ms. Nixon?
Well, um, I, I look forward to a, a conclusion in the library situation. It has been our, our dearest hope that, um, we can bring our friends and neighbors into Solon Township along, but, um, that is for their board to decide of their elected officials. Um, I, I, I hope it remains a community library. I think that we've, we've reached as far as we can to the middle and then some. Um, you know, certainly, you, as Ms. Hamel pointed out, even at the end of that three-year contract, it's not an equal millage. Um, but that was because we were, we were trying to, to care for our friends and neighbors in Solon Township. Um, and, and in the future, perhaps, we will look at increasing it so that it's an equal millage across the board, but that's them. And, um, I don't know, what I can say is we've done our best. We've done our best to, to try to bring our friends and neighbors along. Um, and so it, it's, it's on Solon Township now and their elected officials to do what they feel is best for their community.
And Mr. Marvel, I would never dare to guess the outcome of an election, but I wish you all the best, sir. If one, whichever one of us does not get elected, I, I hope will be still involved in the city in some way. We always, there's always a need for volunteers, be it planning commission or, or what have you, so, best of luck to you, young man.
Thank you. Um, and then again, thank you to the, to the city, to the employees of the city who make all this run. Uh, you know, and again, whatever the outcome, um, sitting up here has been, it's been my great honor. There's been things that I've been super excited, uh, to be a part of. There's been things I, I'm so sick to death of talking about. Jesus, help me if I ever have to talk about marijuana ordinances again. Um, but, but I, I am, I am thankful, at least for this past years, that, um, that the trust, the trust that's been placed in me by the residents of the city of Cedar Springs and, um, and we'll, we'll see, we'll see what November holds. I'd never dare to guess.
Things I need to clarify. There seems to be this construct that's been put out by members of the library board that there is some memo random attorney that doesn't have a name that is claiming that we somehow can't have a contract. It's straight out false. And I don't care if that person holds a title and that they put it out on Facebook, so that somehow makes it a thing. It's not a thing. Not a thing. And Solon's attorney doesn't think it's a thing. Our attorney doesn't think it's a thing. And Lake One, who is our cooperative, doesn't think it's a thing. So that's the first one. The second one, the idea that eighteen thousand dollars is a flush budget. The building, the building that I teach in has more than half of that as a budget and none of that has to go for computers. The building for just high school students. Eighteen thousand dollars is not a flush budget for a library. It's not. And if you stand up here and yell at me about how you don't like how the library is funded and you have told me that you think that the library should be funded entirely with donations, that children should not be allowed to have library cards, so they can quote-unquote not get in trouble and that people should pay every time they check out a library book. You do not believe in libraries. Libraries, and then if you go to other communities and ask to ban books, libraries are like oxygen. When communities are in poverty, we need to spend more money on libraries. Where people It's where they get access to the internet. It is where they find access to information. It is where they can type up a job application and have it printed. It is where they can get resources. It is where they can look at where jobs are available. It is, it is all of the things. And this idea that somehow it's acceptable to have the community with the least amount of money with the least, we have twenty-two percent of our children in poverty in the city. It's nowhere near that in Solon. Our property values are like half of what Solons are. But we're paying one point two mils. And they're currently paying point four. And they somehow feel this is not reasonable. I don't know what to do with that. I don't know what to do with that. But we will fund the library, because libraries are like oxygen. And we have to pull marijuana money if we have to go to KDL. If we have to, whatever we have to do, we will fund the library. Strangling it by having another seven thousand people come and not pay is not an option. It's not an option. We sit here because the people in this community said we should sit here and they have said way before us, that they wanted to pay a dedicated millage. Not our vote, their vote for a library. And it's our responsibility to make that happen. And not to give those services away to another community that's actually more wealthy. And you can come in here with a gun and point it at me. You can yell it outside my house on my sidewalk. You can call me up and yell at me on the phone. You can spit at me. You can point your finger and poke me. You can yell at me in the grocery store. I don't care. Libraries are that important. And libraries for our community are that important. And our school does not have a library. I don't know what to do with that. And as a person with a disability, I can't access much of the materials from the library, because we don't have them. We don't have the digital materials that you need if you're a person with a reading disability. I don't know what to do with that. I have twenty-five books on hold. I have some I've been on hold for, for almost a year. I can afford to go buy them from Audible. I can afford to go buy them from Amazon. It's an ebook. Lots and lots of people in our citizens can't. And lots of our children can't. And the children with disabilities are even more likely to be in poverty. And they can't access it through school, because the school doesn't have a library. And we are not funding it here, because we are trying to provide services for people who don't wanna pay. I don't know what to do with that. I, we're, we're going to put out one more offer in good faith and hope that they are willing to meet us. But we, we have to be able to fund our library. We're gonna do it one way or another. We're done.